Good evening, I'm going to call this Lacey City Council meeting on August 9th, 2018, to order. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all.
So, we have an agenda for this evening, is there any additions? Can you motion?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve this evening's agenda and consent agenda items, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, we have an agenda. First up on our agenda is public comments on items not on the agenda. I think someone just signed up, can you please come up and state your full name and tell us where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes?
Sure.
Thank you, members of the commission, my name's Joe Panesco, I'm here with my wife Anne, we live on Ollery Street in the historic Lacey neighborhood, one of the jewels of our city. I was also the lead neighbor who appealed the Albertson Senior Project due to its size and immensity next door historic neighborhood. I think it's somewhat ironic that the city is now trying to work on a historic overlay associated with the future Railroad Depot project when it has one of the largest buildings anywhere in the city going in within your historic area. The concern we have right now is the construction has started on the intersection of Pacific and Carpenter and it's backing up traffic for many, many blocks and as a result, we have hundreds of cars cutting through the historic neighborhood. Our street, Ollery Street, has a know-through traffic sign that the city expressly placed as part of the condition of the Albertsons project to ensure that our small neighborhood with small, narrow streets with no sidewalks would not be impacted by arterial traffic, we are not an arterial neighborhood, it's a dead end neighborhood. You can only go through our three streets, Bauker, Ollery or Ollery, Bauker, Lacey Street or Ollery Street to get to Seventh, which then takes you over to Carpenter. We have over hundreds, we have several hundreds of cars a day cutting through our streets in the last few days, to the point where it's scary just going out to open the mailbox because there's cars and when they hit these streets, as the mayor knows from living on Lacey Street, these blocks are a straight shot for, I think it's a quarter mile, maybe, maybe more than a quarter mile and there are people hitting speeds of forty and fifty miles an hour because it's a straight shot. We, specifically with north through tra- know-through traffic, there's the Pizza Hut on the strip mall next to the McDonald's and we have twelve to fifteen to twenty Pizza Hut cars driving down our road every day despite the know-through traffic sign. So, the request is that the city do something about this, actually enforce the know-through traffic sign, that was a condition of the Albertsons project, actually put one at the Seventh Avenue Street side of Ollery Street, which there used to be many years ago and it disappeared, and allow our residential streets to remain residential streets and not become a freeway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, just to let you know right now that what's going on at the end of, it's not part of that project, it's PSC putting in a gas line and so, I hear your concern and I think it's a good foresight for when construction does happen there if, if something happens, but this is a temporary project, it's PSC, it doesn't have to do with Albertsons, so, but, we, I understand where you're coming from and I've seen a definitely increase in traffic on Lacey Street as well.
But, so if the roads department or the police department could provide a little bit more effort and relief to maybe enforce the no-traffic sign or post some additional temporary signage to prevent people from thinking they can zip through our residential neighborhood to bypass the construction, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address this council?
Is this where we just stand and wrap complaints that doesn't?
If you'd like to come and, and address this council.
Once it's not on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Sherry Jacobs, I'm the property manager at Alpine Estates and it's, we're a small, nice fifty-five-plus community, we have a, it's called Northwest Processing Plan, it's a trucking company next door, well, they're very loud all through the night, their trucks are running, their refrigerators running all night long, the truck drivers even get out and argue and we're talking like, you know, twelve, two, three in the morning when my residents are trying to sleep and I even called the, Mr. Kramer, the code enforcer for the city and I think he's trying to work on it, I'm really not for sure what's happening with that, but it's like they're getting worse instead of better and I even, the DBA readings, I have a whole list of them and they're going, I mean, way over, you know, the amount of noise that they're supposed to make even during quiet hours or, I mean, normal hours, so, so, just if, and once again, it's Northwest Processing on Thirty-second Avenue, their address is seventy-three-twenty, so, if any help would just be appreciated, so.
Thank you, thank you.
So my residents can, you know, live in peace.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Is that north of the freeway?
Yeah, do we, do we know where that's at?
It's by Hillbilly, right?
It's just off of the corner of Marvin Road and Thirty-second Avenue and our code enforcement officer, Doug Kramer, has been working on the issue and I'll do some follow-up on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, we'll follow up on that with you, thank you. Um, okay, is there any else, anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, um, next on our agenda is a referral from the hearings examiner, project seventeen dash three-three-two, is it Sarah?
Good evening, thank you, tonight I'm going to present to you the hearings examiner's recommendation regarding a preliminary plat and class-four forest practices permit for the Gateway North project and this proposal is to subdivide four-point-eight-five acres into twenty-six lots for duplex development, there will be a total of fifty-two living units on-site if approved. The property's zoned moderate-density residential, which permits a residential density of eight to sixteen units per acre and this proposal is for a density of ten-point-seven units per acre. I have an aerial photo here which shows you the location, it's on, we'll talk about Thirty-second Avenue again, the south side of Thirty-second Avenue, to the west is the Eagle Estates subdivision, an older, larger lot subdivision that's in Thurston County, to the east is a large lot, developable parcel that currently has a single-family home on it, to the north, the Eagle Court subdivision and then, actually, the Alpine Estates Mobile Home Park is right here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then, to the south is the Gateway subdivision and that's currently under development, recently annexed about three-hundred-and-fifty lots. This property actually was also recently annexed to facilitate urban development on this parcel. So, we held a public hearing on June twenty-fifth, staff, the applicant and several members of the community mainly of Eagle Estates provided testimony in regards to the proposal. Public comments and concerns were voiced in regards to neighborhood compatibility issues, traffic impacts, stormwater impacts and tree removal and potential tree hazards as a result of development. And at the hearing, we addressed these items and discussed them in great detail as well as potential requirements to address these impacts. There are conditions of approval recommended that will address some of the concerns and then the applicant has also volunteered methods to reduce compatibility impacts particularly for the homes in the Eagle Estates subdivision. For example, homes along the West Property Line and I will show you the preliminary plat map, these are the homes in the Eagle Estates subdivision. Some of the conditions of approval to address compatibility impacts related to that subdivision include a proposal from the developer to reduce or eliminate any second-story windows on the back of the buildings so that they're not looking out onto the neighborhood to the, to the west.
So is?
Let's see, also planting a buffer, a tree buffer along the West Property Line with trees at about seven to eight feet in height at the time of planting to allow for a greater screen of those houses from the existing subdivision and I have a photo of the, a photo simulation of the potential elevation for what that might look like if approved. That became, that no upper-story windows beyond those houses became a recommended condition of approval in the hearings examiner's recommendation. In regards to some of the other concerns, particularly in regards to tree removal, the applicant's going to be required to consult with the forester on an ongoing basis throughout all phases of development to ensure that any of the remaining trees on-site, we do have tree tract requirements, don't become a hazard as a result of development, as well as to ensure that trees on the immediately adjacent properties aren't also impacted by construction and then become a hazard for the existing property owners to have to take care of at some later point in time. And then, like all developments, this project is going to be required to meet the most current adopted stormwater requirements, that's going to ensure that there aren't off-site stormwater impacts to adjacent properties. The applicant's also going to be required to construct road frontage improvements throughout the subdivision and along the project boundary on Thirty-second Avenue as well as pay traffic mitigation fees for road impacts as a result of the increased traffic from the property. So, the hearings examiner has recommended approval with several conditions of approval and tonight we request that council approve the recommendation subject to those findings, conditions and conclusions of law specified in his report dated July tenth of two thousand eighteen.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve project number seventeen dash three-three-two, request for approval of preliminary plat and class-four forest practices permit application for Gateway North.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this preliminary plat and class-four practices permit application for Gateway North, is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
So, one of this, I know that they looked at and are doing things for stormwater issues.
Yes.
While I was reading this, it talked about at least two or three major rainstorms that caused flooding along the streets to get in and out and making it difficult and obviously severe storms are going to get worse with climate change and stuff. How has that been taken into this issue and tried to eliminate the, the major problems?
So, the severe storms that caused flooding on Thirty-second Avenue were a number of years ago and since, I think the last major storm was in two thousand six or two thousand eight, Scott may be able to speak to it, but the city did go in and make some improvements to the culvert and I believe the developer of the Eagle Court subdivision as well was required to go in and make improvements to change the culverts so that Eagle Creek would flow through along Thirty-second and reduce the flooding impacts.
Okay.
We haven't had a storm event or flooding event on Thirty-second Avenue since those improvements were made.
And that was done, thank you.
Oh, I'll also add that the most significant flooding event there on Thirty-second, it was kind of the perfect storm, not only was it the biggest rain event, you know, multiple day rain event in many years, but there was also a crushed culvert pipe there that prevented the flow that caused part of the flooding.
Okay.
And as Sarah said, the culvert pipe, that entire drainage way between thirty, or between Marvin Road and, and Eagle Creek was revamped with the Eagle Court development.
Okay, thank you.
I know there was quite a few concerns from the neighbors about the additional traffic on Thirty-second and that on Marvin, but the hearings examiner feels like those conditions have been met?
Yes, and it, because, because of the road network that will eventually build out the Eagle, this subdivision will have multiple opportunities, right now they'll have, they'll go out and use Thirty-second and either can go out to Marvin or can go north and take Hawksbury Road as their major alternatives. Eventually Thirty-first Avenue to the south will be developed to allow some other additional opportunities for, for movement within the northeast area from this subdivision.
So, yeah, I see that, they're able to exit down to Thirty-first.
Exactly.
Yeah, I see that.
And they'll eventually even be able to take Thirty-first West so that removing traffic also from Marvin Road.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very.
It's nice to see another opportunity here to help ease the housing shortage in the area, so, it's good to see that.
Other questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this preliminary plat, is all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, next up on our agenda is the Martin Way East Annexation Housekeeping Amendment. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, tonight you have in front of you an ordinance to adopt some housekeeping amendments related to the Martin Way East Annexation. Back on October twelfth of two thousand seventeen, you approved ordinance fifteen-eighteen to formally approve the Martin Way East Annexation. You might remember, this is the area north and east of River Ridge High School along Martin Way. During final processing of the app, the annexation by the Thurston County Assessors Office, staff was made aware that the language in the adopted ordinance did not include specific language waiving the city's portion of the Fire District Three levy. Without that language, the Assessors Office is concerned that the property owners would be paying both the Thurston County fire levy as well as the Lacey fire levy as per the language in the ordinance, even though it was council's intent to waive Lacey's portion of the fire levy. So, to address this, you have a revised ordinance in front of you tonight that's been drafted specifically waiving the city's portion of the bonded indebtedness associated with Fire District Three. Once this has been approved, it will be sent to the Assessors Office for final processing. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I move that we adopt the ordinance to approve a housekeeping amendment relating to the Martin Way East Annexation, project number sixteen dash seventeen, uh, one-seven-nine, sorry.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance to approve the housekeeping amendment related to the Martin Way East Annexation, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I, I thought we addressed this at the time of annexation, did we just missed it or something?
It wasn't explicit in, we, we did address it, but it wasn't explicit in the ordinance and so, we tried to convince the Assessors Office that we had addressed it through the ordinance, they even took it to the Thurston County Prosecutor's Office who made a kind of a decision that, no, because it wasn't in the ordinance, then it wouldn't apply, so, that's why we're back to clarify.
Got it, got it. So, it's been moved and seconded to adopt this ordinance, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, next on our agenda is the mayor's report and I have one item, which is the recommendation to appoint Eddie Bishop to his first term on the planning commission and can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, there's some discussion, I know Eddie's here, want to come up and introduce yourself to the council?
Hello, my name is Eddie Bishop, I live on Montclair Drive in Lacey, I'm acquainted with most of you on the council. Thank you Mayor Ryder for choosing me for, for this position, I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to, to working on the planning commission, I've taken an interest in the amount of growth that Lacey has seen and will see in the future and I'd like to contribute to the process of being able to handle that growth. Living on college, I, I get to experience that growth every time I want to turn left out of my, out of my driveway, so, I'm also an avid cyclist and I'm looking forward to helping make Lacey be a more pedestrian and bicycle and small-business friendly community in areas where that makes sense, so, I appreciate your confidence in me and I look forward to serving, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion?
Do we have a golden buzzer here? No.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to appoint Eddie Bishop to his first term on the planning commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries, I also recognize Dave from our planning commissions here, thank you for being here. So, next up is our city manager's report.
I'm the mayor and city council, couple items before you, the first is the Stillcombe-Marvin Annexation, project number eighteen dash one-five-four, and Ryan Andrews will provide that background.
Back with another annexation, it's definitely been a popular topic lately. So, here you have in front of you tonight, the first step in an annexation to annex some property near the intersection of Stillcombe Road and Marvin Road in our Hawksbury area. The city's received a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings by Frank Evans of Nero's Real Estate, Inc. The filing of this notice is the first step in the annexation process under the petition method as defined in RCW. This requires a petition filed by property owners representing a minimum of ten percent of the valuation of the area proposed for annexation. As a result of this petition, the city council must pass a motion notifying the petitioners of its approval, rejection or modification of the annexation area's geographical boundaries. If the council votes to approve the ten percent petition, then the city will move forward with obtaining property owner's signatures on a petition from a total of sixty percent of the assessed valuation of the area. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail here as far as the city actually gaining those signatures, it's a little different than, than normal and I'll explain why. First of all, here is a map of the area proposed for annexation, which is located in the Meadows Planning Area and with, in the Lacey Urban Growth Area, north, north and east of the intersection of Stillcombe Road and Marvin Road and west of Hawks Glen Drive. The area is sixty-two, a little over sixty-two acres and two separate tax parcels that you can see on the map there and would actually connect to the Lacey city limits to the north. This is the current Mark Apartments Development and Ho Street would, would be right here, the extension of Ho Street. Here's an aerial photograph that shows the property in a little bit more detail. The largest parcel of these two is thirty-nine and a half acres and contains the existing Rainier Vista Mobile Home Park, which contains a hundred and fifty-one lease spaces, the Mobile Home Park is here. The north part is twenty-two and a half acres and is undeveloped and is primarily forested with third-growth Douglas firs. The twenty-eighteen-nineteen assessed value of these parcels is just under six million dollars. Here's a zoning map showing the, the property, the property, both are zoned low-density residential, three to six units per acre. So, moving on, the, under the petition method of annexation, the city council has the opportunity to adjust boundaries to create more logical extensions of the city limits and incorporate properties that may benefit from incorporation. In addition, the city council, in discussion at the twenty-eighteen council retreat, set a priority, the development of a strategy to annex the city-owned Regional Athletic Complex property into the incorporated city limits. So, in front of you tonight is actually, it's been reviewed and recommended by the Land East Committee to actually modify the boundaries of the initial petition to include what's shown here, which we call the expanded annexation area denoted on the map, so it would actually connect to the city limits in the same location through the Mobile Home Park and the undeveloped property to the north. Total, this would be about two-hundred-and-fifty-nine acres and twelve separate tax parcels, the twenty-eighteen-nineteen assessed value of all of these parcels is just short of forty million dollars. However, much of the assessed value is in parcels that are owned by a government entity and would be exempt from the payment of property taxes, the taxable assessed value is just under eleven million dollars. Talk a little bit about what would be included in the expanded area annexation, it would include Ostrom's Mushroom Farm to the west of the Mobile Home Park, this would be Marvin Road running north and south, would be Niskwali Middle School and the property that was formerly Bucknell Field. To the south of that is a future phase of the Regional Athletic Complex, to the east across Marvin would be the current development of the Regional Athletic Complex as well as the city's property at the northwest corner and the far eastern edge, which includes a city water tower. And then, we also have proposing to include two properties owned by Fire District Three, which is Station Thirty-four and some undeveloped property that they have to the north that they will actually be constructing a, a future fire station on here shortly. So, those are all included in the expanded area for annexation. Here's the zoning for the area, certainly a mixture of zoning types, most of it is low-density three to six, so you'll notice the Mobile Home Park here, low-density three to six, Ostrom's is also a residential zone, zone low-density three to six, as well as the, the Fire District's property and then, the city's property in the northwest corner. We do have two parcels that are zoned open space institutional and that would be the Niskwali Middle School property as well as Bucknell Field and then, the Regional Athletic Complex. The future phase across Marvin Road actually has a moderate-density and high-density residential zoning district as of right now. One of the advantages of, of the city actually annexing this is that we have the opportunity to look at the properties and have them within our jurisdiction if and when we are ever ready to rezone those properties. There's some inconsistency between their uses and, and, you know, what's there now and, and what the, the zoning currently is. As far as utilities go, water is served by the city of Lacey throughout the majority of the proposed annexation area, have some of that, that's actually sewer water lines here, with mains located in both Marvin and Stillcombe Roads, the exceptions are Ostrom's, which is served by its own well, but is on city of Lacey Water for Fire Protection and Niskwali Middle School, which is actually served by Thurston County PUD Water. Sewer service is actually, this map is a little bit old in that we actually currently have a forced main running north and south on the easterly edge of the annexation area with a new lift station at Stillcombe Road and Hawks Glen. Currently, the only property connected to the sewer system though is the Regional Athletic Complex. Upon development or redevelopment or failure of existing systems, systems would be required to connect to city sewer services.
Niskwali's not on sewer?
It's not. One of the things, two more things to note, first of all, is related to police service in the area, which is currently provided by the Thurston County Sheriff's Office, there's some data that's included in your packets as far as the amount of calls for service, approximately a thousand incidents in both twenty-sixteen and seventeen, which is significant in, in its number. Of those calls, approximately two-hundred were associated with the Mobile Home Park. With annexation, police response obviously transfers to the city of Lacey and one of the things to keep in mind is that we're not currently hosting a school resource officer at Niskwali Middle School and may need to expand that program should we, should we annex Niskwali. And then finally, fire services, that's provided by Fire District Three out of Station Thirty-four, which is actually part of the, within the annexation area and just like I was up here for, as with previous annexations, the issue of bonded indebtedness comes up, it is expected that the city will be waiving the city's portion of the bonded indebtedness related to the Fire District bond in this area, so that we're not, they're not, property owners are not levied twice. So, staff is recommending that the city council approve the initial petition with the modifications of the boundaries to include the neighboring properties that include parcels owned by the city and regional partners that would benefit from the logical extension of the municipal boundaries. If the council votes to approve the petition, then the city will move forward with obtaining a petition from a total of sixty percent of the assessed valuation of the area, because the city is such a large stakeholder in this, the city, the city staff will, will actually circulate the petition and get that signed. Once the city completes the sixty percent petition, annexation proceedings can continue. So, there is a long recommended motion in your packet for tonight and I'm actually going to recommend that we add one more to that, which is, would be adding number five, which would be to authorize the city manager to sign the annexation petition should the council decide to move forward with this tonight as the, the city's representative for the city's properties. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Before we get started, I, I know that the Detrays just south of here are really would like to come into the city of Lacey, is there a reason why we're not including them in this annexation?
I think Rick spoke into him, he might be able to answer that better than I can.
When this annexation opportunity arrives, we were looking at the, the city-owned properties and, and the direction from the council retreat. I have talked with Frank Kirkbride, who has, is representing the Detrays and we talked about it at length about timing and if we end up including them now, then we're going to have to go back through the process and start over, however, as this annexation goes forward as it is, they can still file their own petition contingent upon this or when this is done, because they'll be now adjacent and there'll be a single property owner annexation following this up as be an option for them and they seem to understand and accept that option.
Okay, because I know time, they're looking to develop that property and we, you know, time is of the essence, that works into their timeline?
Yes, it can and, and I talked to Mr. Kirkbride, we talked about their development plans and they've have done some pre-submission work with the county, but also too, this doesn't prevent them from continuing their development options, but also watching this, if we add them now, that time period could be extended longer than what if we go forward as-is with this annexation, just because we'd have to go back to the beginning and go through the utility committee process to get to this point. process to get to this point and start the process for filing with the boundary board or end the petitions signature gathering.
Deputy Mayor, and then?
Okay, I'd like to ask a question before we even make the motion. So, we're trying to unify the boundary and stuff, as you said, but there are two large parcels right to the left and middle of that. I was curious why they weren't pulled in and maybe even that little?
Eighth Court?
Finger in there, but?
That's my question as well. Aren't we creating an island?
Well, that's a church down there, that, that finger.
Yeah, it's not an island per se, but almost.
But that Hawks Ridge is?
It's surrounded on three sides.
Yeah, so that's my question with the three.
Right, and it comes to assessed value. The issue is if we include those residential properties, then that could push us out to actually need to obtain signatures from residents in that area.
Have we done the calculation on the assessed value? It seems like we still own the majority of the assessed value there, that we've, we've hit the 60%.
We do. We, this has been something that's been on our radar screen for some time. In fact, we actually thought that in order to annex the rack, that we were actually going to have to get about 50% of the, the properties in here to sign on to a petition to be able to annex. Just so happened that this property owner here is ready to liquidate their property and in doing so, they see value added in being part of the city. And so, when that happened, then we kind of jumped on it to take advantage of being able to extend this down to to pull in the Regional Athletic Complex.
Well, but at the very least, why don't we get eighth court?
The, so, the, the thing is too, is this application will be sent to the Thurston County Boundary Review Board after the council holds its public hearing, which is the next step. And that, we're expecting that it's a possibility that they could modify the boundaries to have us take in those other developments that would surround it. At this point, we didn't want to add a bunch of property owners to a petition in fear of that not being a petition, or not being able to satisfy getting, you know, the petition through.
It still seems like we have six, even if we add an eighth court, we have, at least eighth court, we, we have 60% no problem.
Right.
They'll just clean here, I think.
When we look at the assessed valuations of the area, you have a lot of individual, single-family home parcels that in their whole would out, we would not have 60% with just with the property you sho, shown there. With Rainier Vista Park, Mobile Home Park and the, the school district as well as the city properties, if you took in the additional area north, we would not have the 60%.
Well, yeah, especially that one little swooping?
So, you're saying, you're saying even if we take an eighth court, we don't have 60%?
I apologize, I was, I was talking more, I was talking with the?
I understand Hawks Ridge, but what if we took in that?
That little point.
We, we, we didn't look at the assessed valuation in there.
Yeah, there's probably, that probably isn't going to be high enough to throw the petition out. The priority was to get those that would sign the petition on the petition, so that would have been the city, school district.
Which I understand, but even if we add, extend the boundary over and went up, we still have the 60% to go through, don't we?
You're kind of dividing the neighborhood.
Uh, council member?
Thanks, so as the old guy here, this council has taken a more aggressive approach towards annexation, certainly than the council of ten years ago, but understanding that, I do think that, that staff taking priority and taking it one step at a time is prudent because, you know, we have to remember that, you know, it's a serious thing in the sense that some citizens won't want to do it. And so, that's gonna, it's gonna, it's a drama in each episode, so even though it looks like a game of, what's that game where you, you get one corner, then you get another corner, then you get another corner, you're gonna grab it all in, I think it's prudent for us to be patient and just, just take it one careful step at a time like we're doing and, if you will, obviously, those properties will probably be annexed at some point in the near future, so that's my opinion.
I think so.
Councilor Stone?
Yeah, I have to agree with the council member, Hern. I think, I think this is a, doesn't muddy the water, makes the process a lot easier, cleaner, and the Boundary Review Board could ultimately include those properties and, and do the right thing, in my opinion. But, one step at a time, this is great and people recognize value going in the city and, and that, to me, is a great thing.
I, I understand this is the safe way to go. Annexations, as we know, are, can be difficult and I think this is an opportunity to bring them in the city now, but so be it. Is there, can I get a motion then?
I would move to, I'd make a motion to proceed with the proposed Stillcom-Marvin annexation proposal that includes the following provisions. Authorize staff to circulate a petition and gather signatures of property owners representing at least 60% of the assessed value of annexation property, demonstrating their consent to annex. Require the following additional parcels, also to include within the boundary of the area to be considered for annexation. Number three, require the assumption of all or of any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed. However, as it relates to the issues of bonded indebtedness associated with Fire District Three, the city will waive the city's portion of such bonded indebtedness for the area of annexed territory located in Fire District Three. And, number four, waive the requirement for completion of the annexation study in accordance to city's annexation policies prior to the adoption of ordinance to formally annex the area to make application by the Boundary Review Board. And, number five, authorize the city manager to sign the proposal upon the approval of the vote tonight.
Can you repeat the motion, please? Second.
I tried to hurry as fast as I could.
Very good, you got them all. It's been moved in second in discussion. You know, my, my only discussion is I, I would like to add the other parcels, but I understand this is the easier way to go and I guess we have to wait to see what the Boundary Review Board says, but.
I, I agree with the mayor on that. I mean, just, part of the idea with annexation is to clean up the lines, right, to clean up the boundaries. This, if anything, makes the boundaries less square than they were before. Taking those additional parcels just really makes a lot of sense. How, how much off of the 60%, I mean, we've got the school property, we've got the rack, we've got the Fire District property, I mean, how much of that would we really need to get to that 60%?
Are you talking about the two neighborhoods that are?
Yeah, if we were to include that.
We don't have that available, other than we have run those numbers and?
And it doesn't work without them?
Correct. That's why we're, that's the mobile, why the Mobile Home is part of the application and not those two neighborhoods.
But the very least, I don't understand what, I mean, why we're not taking the property to the right.
Just a little finger?
Yeah.
If I can, or Deputy Mayor, sorry.
So, I suspect, having been on the Boundary Review Board, is that they will incorporate the one in the, you know, to the right, simply because it, there's a chunk there, but, and it's, it will be surrounded by three sides, but, so, at least, and I'm not sure that would throw anything out anyway. I'm not sure about the other. So, we, if we wait to see what the Boundary Review Board does, it would probably be beneficial to us.
Councilor?
I would just say that the benefits far outweigh the, the cons when being annexed by the city or remaining in, in the, in the county and the UGA. I do think that it's not wise for us to divide neighborhoods, you know, one side of the street and other, you know, the other side of the street stays. It, to me, it's going to come with time and right now, the first step is this.
So, can I make one more comment?
Deputy Mayor?
So, the thing that has not been brought up, but maybe should, is that it is going to increase police patrol in that area by probably quite a bit and, and maybe even require a, a school resource officer. So, so that may be something we need to think about as we move forward if we go ahead and approve this.
Well, I tell you what, I'm, I can't wait for the Lacey Police to be there at the rack. I mean, it's just, I just?
Good point.
It's about, it's about time, so, yeah.
It does bring up a good question for the chief, though. Not, not including the additional, you know, school resource officer, with the additional, I think you said about a thousand calls, would that be able to be handled with the current force? Would we need additional officers?
Well, like with any call load, we would prioritize and, you know, respond when available. We have the city broken up into three areas. The northeast area historically was the slower area for working. That has changed dramatically over the last few months and last couple of years as we've added apartment buildings and more businesses. Call load has definitely increased. It's not just calls, but it's also, as you can imagine, response times. And we would have an expanded area to try to respond to. So, there's multiple areas affected with an average of give or take three calls a day to this area. It, it is impactful. But we will respond and we will provide service.
I would imagine you, probably responding to a fair amount of those calls already anyway because of, right, because we, I mean, if we're closer than the sheriff's department at the time, and I'm assuming that happens fairly regularly in that area, that we're making the response anyway.
We do mutual aid back and forth with the sheriff's office on a fairly routine basis. We, however, last time I checked, were responding to assist them two to one compared to them coming in and helping us, so there is a little service being provided already.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes me?
City Manager?
Well, I just wanted to add, you may recall during the council retreat, we actually did a mini portion of the annexation study that specifically looked at this and there was an identified that resources will be needed, especially in the police.
Okay.
Councilor?
So, we've had resource, resource officers at the high schools share or, or have more than one school that they're responsible for, right? So, it wouldn't be nothing new.
The SRO at River Ridge did not have a middle school attached because Niskwali was in the county. The school district has, for quite some time, hoped that that school could be serviced by the city, A for consistency and B, those students will end up at River Ridge where the school resource officer, officer is Lacey Police. That resource officer does the alternative high school. And now that Salish is open, he went from one school and an alternative high school to two middle schools and a high school as well. So, that makes the most sense, the, the middle school that feeds the high school serviced by the same officer. However, after the boundary changes, I'm not sure how that looks anymore.
I, I would argue that Ken's one of the best school resource officers.
Very good, so, very good.
Is there any other discussion? Well, seeing none. It's been moved in second to approve this motion to proceed with the proposed Stillcom-Marvin annexation proposals with the five provisions as stated. All in favor of that motion? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I would add one last thing, Mr. Mayor. That's a lot of numbers for a kid that was diagnosed with dyslexia at?
And you did well.
You did very well.
So, it's, but, you know, any kids out there struggling with something like that, it's, you know, you?
Keep at it, yeah.
Yeah, it'll, it'll come.
Thanks. Next, I cannot?
So, we have another item. One is a MOU or memorandum of understanding between the city of Lacey and St. Martin's University, and Rick Walk will provide the background on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and, and council. And as the city manager said, this is a, before tonight, is consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Lacey and St. Martin's University. And this is another step in a long and, a long and a great partnership between the city and St. Martin's University. The purpose of the MOU is to set up the terms of a future lease for the city to lease about 4,600 square feet of Zaveral Hall, Zaveral Hall's their existing maintenance facility, for a period of three years, and for the purposes of locating the future Lacey Makerspace facility. And then, as the council is aware, the, the Lacey Makerspace is a idea that's coming to fruition in a partnership between St. Martin's University, Thurston EDC Economic Development Council, Business of Innovation Center, and several community partners, including the Lacey South Town Chamber and the city of Lacey, to develop a space that will provide opportunity for the community to access computer aided drafting equipment and equipment, CNC equipment and the like to develop prototypes, to gain hands-on training in, in those type of equipment in terms of manufacturing, and also to foster entrepreneurism throughout the community. And so, with this MOU, again, it lays out the terms of that future lease, so we can have a spot, physical spot for the Makerspace for its eventual opening. Again, with that, the staff request that the council authorize the city manager to sign that memorandum of understanding between the city of Lacey and St. Martin's University and to execute, and allow, and also to execute a, a future real estate lease agreement based on the terms of the MOU. And before I conclude, I do want to recognize and introduce Dr. Dave Olwell, who is the dean of the Howland Ingmarcus School of Engineering at St. Martin's University, and he's been involved in this process with me in, in representing St. Martin's University and has been a, a great asset to the, the Makerspace Executive Board. So, with that, I would turn it over to the city council and entertain any questions that you may have.
Can you get a motion?
I authorize, move that we authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lacey and St. Martin's University and to execute a real estate lease agreement based on the terms of the MOU. And I do this heartily. Okay, go ahead.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded?
I was gonna say, I'm gonna take this one off.
So, moving to second, is there any discussion?
I, I would say that I believe the good doctor was in the class we took for the Makerspace to, a, a really basic 3D printing class, me and my son signed up through, through the college. It was really cool. We made a 3D, like a coaster that said the acronyms for Lacey's Makerspace. And now it's a, we, we have it at, at home for a souvenir, but it was really cool. They have really good setup there and the potential for, you know, small businesses and/or graduate students or anybody in the community that doesn't have the room in their garage or, or really the knowledge to use the tools that this facility will have. It's, it's gonna be great for them.
I agree. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved in second to authorize the city manager to sign this MOU with St. Martin's to execute the real estate lease agreement based on the terms of the MOU. All in favor of that motion? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Just had one final item. Did you have something?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, if I can, just kind of announce too, that as we're working on launching the Makerspace, we are, the, the executive board is working on a fundraising plan, a community fundraising plan, and we are scheduling an event for Tuesday, September 25th between four and six at the Hub Conference or Conference Center to have, just at a community event to engage those investors in the community to have an opportunity to participate in the Makerspace. I want to put that out there for the council for future reference.
So, everything else, are we, we're on schedule to, to get this open, the Makerspace?
Yes, so, we got, everything's going on track and we also have a couple of, few potential companies coming out of the St. Martin's graduate program that are going, could be users of this space as we're going forward, so everything's coming into focus.
Excellent.
Where was the location for that again?
It's at the Hub?
For the Hub, or at the Hub, yes.
Great.
So, one last item. I know traffic was brought up. I wanted our Public Works Director, Scott Agar, to bring up the PSC gas line, because there is going to be more disruption. I do want to at least give heads up to council. This, again, is a PSC-driven project. It's a gas line that they need to provide or basically install to ensure that there's adequate gas pressure through the area that residents and businesses rely on. The other thing too, they're trying to get it done before the school year, so again, although it's a convenient or inconvenience, it's going to be a temporary convenience. It's not just the Lacey historical neighborhood.
Oh, jeez, we're gonna close that and so they're gonna be detouring through the historic neighborhood?
So, that's a great segue. I'm gonna have Scott handle that.
Yeah, it'd be key. So, the, the thing that my neighbor came to complain about, we're gonna make worse?
Absolutely. So, just to, to explain, and I have a couple pictures here to kind of demonstrate the necessity. So, this closure will occur Monday, scheduled from nine to four to avoid the PMP hours. And, you know, they will close it at, at Carpenter, so North-South Movement will be completely closed. The detour routes are shown in blue. Keep in mind, these are all public streets and they're used for public necessity, so as much as some citizens like to believe that they're their own private street that only serves them and their neighbors. serves them and their neighbors, that is unfortunately not true. We do sympathize with the amount of traffic, but this is absolutely necessary. So just to demonstrate the challenge, so you can see, this is a steel welded pipe, and it's being laid about eight-foot depth, which requires shoring. So these tractor side boom that are used to lay the pipe have to suspend the pipe, and they have to fish it down underneath all this shoring and feed it through. So that's a picture of the eastern portion of the work, which is now installed. So you can see the pipe being suspended by the boom, and there it is in place. So not only are they working around the shoring, but they're also working around things like this water line right here. So you can see, this is Carpenter Road right here, and we're looking directly into Pacific. So there's no less than a half a dozen different obstructions that they need to feed this pipe through underneath Carpenter Road. So the length of pipe they will be installing will be all at once. It'll be over eighty feet long, and they'll have to use those side boom tractors to fish it underneath all there and weld it up. There's really no practical way to break it into smaller sections. And keep in mind, it is a high-pressure gas line and connection welded joints. Even though they're tested and they're good and they're solid, those are the, kind of the, if something's gonna break or crack or leak, that's where it will happen. So minimizing the number of joints is critical. So it is necessary for them to take, you know, to complete this link across the intersection all at once as opposed to break it into smaller sections. And again, you know, we apologize to any inconvenience, but...
So, this is happening on Monday?
Monday, yes.
You know, I live in that neighborhood. Has a letter's been out, been sent out to this neighborhood on that's happening?
So we have put out the notification to emergency services. We're going out on social media. PSC, it's their project, and they are the lead on all outreach to businesses and homeowners.
So the answer is no, because I haven't received.
So the, I have a couple of questions. So when we did all that Carpenter road work a few years ago, why didn't they do it then? And then, too, they can use Kenwood, right?
Yes, absolutely. They can use Kenwood.
Yeah, but why didn't they do it when we tore up that road?
This has been programmed for a number of years. And with any capital project, you know, PSC is a big organization, you know, they have literally thousands of miles of main, and so they weren't in a position to do this at that time.
Would have been ideal.
So, councilmember?
How does our staff feel about putting out a reader board saying, "PSC project", you know, through the week, you know?
Complaint to them.
Tell the whole story, the truth and nothing but the truth.
Well, we might be able to add PSC project to the reader boards.
Huh?
Say, we might be able to add PSC.
No, to the, to the mobile boards that people read.
Yeah, right.
Here's, here's my concern, is this, it's true that this is a public street, but it's a public street that's basically a single, almost a single lane. It's very, it's, two cars passing in an old historic Lacy neighborhood is very tight in areas. It seemed to me that we would need some sort of police officers in that detour section to make sure that they're going the twenty miles per hour, which is the posted speed limit through there. Because if you detour all these cars through this neighborhood, they're not gonna be going, it's, you're putting, you know, people's lives in danger, in my opinion.
So PSC is using State Patrol to do their traffic control for them?
Oh.
So it's not just flaggers out there, it is State Patrol officers who are out there doing this. And, you know, not to question the gentleman that was here, but traffic does not go at fifty miles an hour down that street. So...
Well, there's, there's cars that do. Sometimes there's cars that go flying through there. I know that for a fact.
It will be busy. And there, again, you know, this is necessary. There's not another option. We don't do it at night because of the noise that would impact the apartments adjacent to it.
So anyone maybe add? I mean, we're kind of in an odd position. I mean, again, it's another utilities project. I mean, granted, it's impacting our community, so we're obviously concerned about that. I mean, I think we will relay our concerns to PSC. I mean, I'm personally impacted, too. It's the intersection I use to go home, so it's not just a specific neighborhood. That's a major intersection that serves the entire city as well as the region. So I think we can communicate those concerns. The window that they're looking at is Monday, which is gonna be the most disruptive. And then after that, hopefully they get the pipe in and it'll go back to the current state that it's in. But again, this is not ideal, but we're hoping this is gonna be done here in about a month.
So...
So, again, it's Monday during the daytime? Can you, what's the, what's the hours again?
Nine to four. So we're avoiding the AM/PM peak. And it's more likely they will have it completed before four, but they're allowing time for, you know, contingencies.
We will try to have officers in that area more than normal as well.
I would say, I would just make sure everybody knows that just a project of this size and magnitude, I was building trades mechanic for many years before I moved up here and took care, took over the family business. But if anyone's ever seen a high-pressure gas line explode or catch on fire, it, they don't want to be anywhere near that. And that's nothing to say about if the water line, the water main was to be broke or flood that, and then the shoring collapses, and then everything turns into a big sinkhole. This is a, this is a really dangerous situation. It's better to have the public nowhere near it when, it gets, especially when it gets tied in.
So I'm just wondering whether or not we could have PSC put a detour sign at Kenwood, so that it's shuffled easier through Kenwood, which is a little wider road.
I mean...
Challenging to place, so then, again, this is the north-south traffic. So placing a single detour sign at Kenwood would not communicate.
The only way, only way you get around this is if you, was that, what's the next street up on the other side of Loas, Lake Lois?
Kenwood.
That's not Kenwood. Sixth Avenue. So you could divert people to Sixth Avenue and step Seventh Avenue, right?
Hey, well, you know, honestly, I'm sure traffic will divert east as well as west.
Yeah.
And Sixth Avenue is in the UGA, right?
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna be able to work with PSC by Monday, and I don't think we're gonna be able to change their plan. But are we agreed that we can put some reader board signs out tomorrow, let people know what's gonna happen on Monday?
There are reader board signs out there right now.
Okay.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
They say PSC project?
I don't believe they say PSC, but they do communicate the, they do communicate the calendar days of the work and advise people to seek alternate routes.
I'm kinda serious, though, if it's a PSC project. It should be, they should know about that.
I'm gonna get killed on this, you have a... The good news is, the fair was over on Sunday.
That's right.
Okay, well.
Well...
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not good.
We, but just to kind of duplicate what the city manager said, we have been, we're obviously in contact with PSC, and we will communicate your concerns to them as well.
Well, my concern is that PSC has not notified this historic neighborhood that there's gonna be a road closure when all that traffic is gonna come through our neighborhood. I mean...
Yeah, we will, we will communicate that concern and communicate our desire for them to, you know, go door-to-door in the neighborhood.
Yes, please. So, I'm sorry, I can't really take comment. Okay, is there anything else? Well, so our next agenda, IMs, standing general committees. First up is the finance committee, which met on July 24th. We had a two-item agenda. The first item was our second quarter city investment report. The second quarter report was developed by the city's investment advisor, government portfolio advisors, the GPA. The city is saving funds by having an outside source do the investments instead of hiring an FTE to perform the work. Overall, the Lacy's investments are performing well. The core fund portfolio is outperforming the state's local government investment pool by twenty-two basis points. Lacy is in a rising rate environment and should see another rise this year. And so the majority of the investments are in US treasuries. The interest earnings are distributed to the city's various funds on a proportionate cash balance basis. The committee recommend developing a policy or a procedure to guide the use and classification of revenues collected in excess of projections. City is reporting unrealized losses due to rising interest rate environment. That's sort of misleading because losses will only occur if certain investments are sold before their maturity, and the city doesn't intend to hold all those investments to maturity, so no losses are anticipated. The investment yield is favorable to the extent the city should analyze the benefit of converting liquid or overnight funds to longer-term core funds. Staff recommend securing long maturities, which would bring Lacy's portfolio closer to the benchmark duration of 1.4 years. And this recommendation is supported by the recent increase into the two-year rates. Our second agenda, IM, was the 2018 budget amendment, amendment updates. Throughout the year, adjustments to the budget becomes necessary as a result of the city council's actions, activity levels that were not anticipated during the budget development, and grant awards. Historically, the budget has been amended once per year immediately prior to development of next year's budget, proposed budget document. And then there's a list here of the, that were the following significant budget amendments that have been identified since adopting the 2018 budget. I won't go through them. They're listed in the packet. Final review of the proposed amendments and proposed budget amendment ordinance will be presented to the finance committee in August in the final approval. The proposed amendments will be considered to the full council in September. That is the finance committee report. Next up is the general government committee. Deputy mayor?
So we had three items. We met July 24th. One, the first item was the council policies and procedures update. And this is a working manual. So we added about six items, officially transferred the duties of land use from the general government and public safety committee to the newly formed land use committee. Actually, we've been a land use committee for, since 2010, but there was no official transfer of these, of the land use issues over into the manual. And to give the utilities committee responsibility to review boundaries for all proposed annexation areas and clarify existing committee responsibilities. The other item, add environment to land use committee scope. Give the council the ability to give specific or limited authority to committees to conduct business on behalf of the council. It's limited. Formalize the process for appointing committee members and additional clarifying language in the policies and procedures. We also added the social media policy to the policies and procedures. And then the, that was recommended to come before full council. The North Thurston Public School Joint Use Agreement was discussed and a motion made and carried to, to the full council. The city and North Thurston Public School District have entered into three supplemental agreements.
I think we already...
Did we do that one?
Did this.
Oh, then we, I can skip that. That'll be easier. Yes, we did. Okay.
What about the flag policy?
Yes. So we already went ahead and passed that at our last council meeting. And then the last one was the flag policy. And the, we, it was proposed to bring it to the full council with suggested revisions. And the city council requested policy for approving additional flags from flown at city hall. And the proposal policy will allow council to follow set rules, which we didn't have before, for making decisions on flying flags, and maintain a list of flags pre-approved by council. Currently, city council has acknowledged its intent to authorize its sister city flag, which is the, I can never say it.
Mink's Mazeski.
Yes, and he says it so well. And, and the pride flag to be flown. The committee questioned how to apply the policy. After some discussion, city attorney Dave Schneider suggested alternate language. The revised language would be forwarded to the full city council. And that's my report.
Thank you. Next up is our boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm at first, the mayor's forum did meet in Bukota last Friday. It was actually, there's only a couple of us there. There was really no big issues that were discussed. Cheryl Selby, the mayor of Olympia, talked about some work she's be doing with, in South County with her steady initiative. And so we talked a little bit about some of the things that were going on there. But that's really all for that, and that's actually the end of my report. So next up is the deputy mayor.
So the Jazzcom Joint Animal Services Commission met August 2nd. We discussed the following draft policies, which will be brought back to us next month. One was concerning rules and procedures, laying out what is expected of the board. The other was the reserve and contingency fund, and then a donations policy. We approved the order covering charges for public records requests based on what the City of Lacey does. And the default charges are set forth in RCW 42 dot 56 dot 120, which is adopted from the State of Washington's Schedule of Charges by Order, and will enable Jazzcom to use an online page similar to Lacy's and post a link with which to make requests directly to the city, so that public records requests can be given. We also discussed a noise abatement in the stray dog kennel area. And one of the major issues is that stray dogs are extremely stressed out. They face each other, and the barking is just beyond loud, actually. And so the, the dogs get extremely stressed out and bark even more, and it just sets it off. So if we use the 10,000 savings expected from what we were going to use for a capital storage area toward design and installation of sound baffling material, it would reduce stress in the stray dogs significantly. What we, the board asked is a proposed project before we can move forward. But the board was certainly supportive of reducing the noise in the kennel area. And then some of these have come up in the paper. So the lead field officer, Eric Johnson, reported on the status of following cases. The selling of exotic species case was approved by the court in Jazzcom's favor. And there is a warrant out for the arrest of the woman that was selling the species under the company named Predators of the Heart in Olympia. And so the exotic species have been sent out to help into areas that handle exotic species and deal with it, even though they're, this company and the woman has, is, hasn't been caught yet. So Jazzcom also received 5,000 towards training as to how cases were to be, are to be handled. And then, I'm sure most of us have heard in the newspaper about the serial cat killer. And Erica said there are good leads, but still, at this time, they haven't caught anyone. And at the time this report was done, there were five cats that had been mutilated, but now it's up to seven. And then lastly, one of the rescue dogs that was brought in that I actually got to meet a while back, and when it was rescued, it was nothing but just skin and bones. But it's now really healthy and doing well, and it's happy. So that, so much so that she was able to be in a photo calendar piece with a firefighter. And let me see if I can find it, because it was great. Um, maybe I can?
I saw it sitting here.
There we are. I don't know if anybody can find it, but it is pretty cute. So, so, so that was kind of cute.
You're talking about the dog?
Of course. So anyway, that's my report about Jazzcom. And then Lot met yesterday, August 8th. Orca doesn't meet in August, so I'm, Lot, it met yesterday in the evening. And our work session consisted of discussing the Lot's long-range wastewater resource management plan for capital investment beyond the next six-year planning period. And then at the same work session, we discussed the impacts of homelessness on Lots, but inlet treatment plant. And also Patty Belmonte from the Hands-on Children's Museum was also there to talk about impacts. And some of the issues are really significant. We've had people climb over the fence and wander around. the fence and wander around. And Lot has had to hire a security guard, and staff has had to spend about an hour to an hour and a half in the early morning hours to scan the area for needles and pocket knives, some of which are actually pointed up and could prick somebody, as well as waste, et cetera. And there was an incident of a person who overdosed and was unconscious that managed to get into the wet center and was discovered by a father and his child. The cameras, that, he apparently survived, but, you know, we had to shuffle the kids someplace and whatever else. And the cameras, which we had to add a lot more, caught a person sneaking in behind a vehicle dumping septic waste. And he was found, but the concern is what if he drowned in some of the settling basins, or worse even, in my opinion, well, no, I mean, bad that if he died. But if a fire was lit around the digesters, which emit gas, it could cause a major explosion and not only injure that person, but staff, and then do significant damage. So that's major. One person came in the wet center with a machete. So, so there we are with these kids around. And Patty Belmonte from the Hands-on Children's Museum has also had a huge log of incidents. Lot in two months had at least 146 logged incidences of...
Two months?
In two months.
146?
146. And, yeah. And so it's costing Lot about $200,000 to $300,000. Now for security, additional cameras, lock down doors, so the front desk people are, been trained to, if there's a potential problem, they can hit the button and lock down the door. As well as staff time to try, which has other 24-hour, you know, seven days a week needs, they're doing this other work besides. So that was, what we're going to try to do is come up with a letter to the city of Olympia and then, and tell them that some of our issues to let them know it could be, particularly if children and other issues, we're really concerned. So that's that one. Then the business meeting, we approved the preliminary rates based on a 3% increase, which is pretty normal because of inflation rates, of $39.80 for the wastewater service charge for 2019, and $41 for 2020. And then for the capital development charge, $6,049.21 for 2019, and $6,230.69 for 2020. And then, this goes back to making sure we have enough funds for the, that long-range management plan of capital investments that I talked about earlier. And that's my report.
Wow.
Yeah.
Actually, before I go on to our next report, I do have a quick thing that I want to talk about for, under my report for the mayor's forum that I didn't get to. One thing that was, has been discussed at the mayor's forum over the many months we've been meeting is that South County, besides Yelm, does not have a relationship with Joint Base Lewis McCord. They don't have any community connectors, and yet there's, so overall, Thurston County is known as a military community, and yet there's a lot of the communities in South County that just don't have that same connection. And so this has been brought up, and we've actually met with General Valeski, and he's reached out and said, hey, what can we do? And we said, oh, you know, it would really be great if you could meet the other mayors from South County. And he's actually inviting us, all the mayors, to Joint Base Lewis McCord next Thursday for a meeting. And so we're going to be all going card pulling. And I think Pete and myself are the only ones that have passes to get on JBLM, but, so we're going to have to get the rest of the mayors on. But that's what we're going to be doing next Thursday. So that's a, it's a really kind of big deal, because there, I think there's a lot of interest there on how some of our, our South County residents and those jurisdictions can be more involved in a JBLM. And speaking about JBLM, today was America's First Corps' 100th anniversary. And so I was up at JBLM for a ceremony. And at the ceremony, when First Corps was first, was really, came about in World War I, their first battle was in France, and they teamed up the First Corps with the Australian Army. And so the commander of the Australian Army was there today at the ceremony and gave, you know, talked about all the times that the Australian Army and First Corps and have worked together over the years. And it was really amazing to hear this, how close of a relationship we have with Australia. And goes on, he went on to talk about in World War II and every major conflict. We've, Australia and the United States have fought side by side, and mostly with First Corps. And so it was really interesting to hear all that. And it was extremely hot being out in the sun today. It was really warm out there, but it was, it was, it was a really good ceremony. And so I just want to pass that along before I forgot about it. So that being said, next up is Councilmember Young.
Hi. So the EDC doesn't meet until September. And then Thurston Thrives has a meeting on August 20th, where Denny Heck will be there presenting about housing issues that he's working on. And on August 29th, Thurston Thrives is hosting a regional housing summit. And this is specifically for elected officials, private and not-for-profit housing developers, and HAT team members. There will be a presentation by Ted Keller from the Department of Commerce, Zach Kosturis of Prime Locations, and Trudy Sukup from Homes First. And then following the presentations, there will be a roundtable discussion on opportunities for regional collaboration and innovative ways to facilitate greater and more diverse housing, housing production. And then today, we had the ad hoc housing committee meeting. Tomorrow, the city managers will be meeting with the county officials, and hopefully we'll be making some progress on getting the elected officials in the urban cities at the table with the county and able to determine where our housing dollars are spent in the county. So that's my report.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Greenstein.
I reported all of my committees actually at our last council meeting, so I have no report.
Next up, Councilmember Hearn.
Thurston County against trafficking, hosted today Human Trafficking 101 Seminar. It was really well-attended. Several new members of the community participated today, and it was sponsored by Washington Trafficking Prevention. And so I guess the takeaway is that it's still a very big issue within the fight against human trafficking, is the issue of awareness. Not everybody believes that it happens. And I can assure you that it does, and it's an issue. And so that's why so many people are addressing it. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Councilmember Cox is not here this evening, but I just wanted, it's her committee. But I did want to give one tidbit from that meeting, being as I serve it, serve on it as a private, on the private sector side.
Go ahead.
With the economy being as good as it is nowadays, property values are rising, and property owners who lease their houses to less fortunate that have subsidies and housing certificates tend to sell their property because it's worth more, you know? And I brought it up to the board. It's really disturbing, because a friend of mine has lived in this place for 14 years and got one month notice to get out and found themselves homeless.
Oh, no.
And it's, it's a real tragedy. And understand, you know, it's supply and demand, and, you know, it's good for them, the investment property and all that. But, you know, the, before we can actually help the homeless, we have to make sure we help the ones that are right on the verge of being homeless. And these atrocities are happening all the time, and it's really unfortunate. So I just wanted to bring awareness to it, to that topic. So because it was disturbing to watch it firsthand nonetheless, hear about it as a rumor or whatever, so.
Was that the Community Action Council?
Yeah, Community Action Council, yeah. But I do have a report for the Lacy South Sound Chamber. The forum was held last week on Wednesday, and we had, the speaker was Dr. Lisa Poundstone. She spoke about her book. She has a new book out called Sacred, Sacred Space, Sacred Soul Spaces. And my phone just timed out, so. And it's, she just brings her knowledge of science and theory design, color theory, space planning, and Feng Shui, and combines it with her spiritual intuition for design and optimal outcome. And a lot of instances, you know, without people even knowing it consciously or subconsciously or whatever, it helps them be more productive and calms, you know, less stress in the business arena, I guess you'd say. But it was very interesting, loved it. She has a website, and it was great. But we also got to honor our own chief, Dusty Pierpoint. The chamber recognizes how great of a fixture he is in the community, in the business community in particular. And the, he got a standing ovation, if I might add. And also, we're losing a longtime chamber member, too, with Cabinets by Travana, Ross Irwin and his wife, Travana.
Sold their...
Sold their business, Cabinets by Travana, and they're moving down to Oregon to be with their family, their grandkids, and their son, I believe it is. And, you know, talk about a company and owners that have been engaged, super-engaged, hyper-engaged in the business community, and the community doing things that government can't or shouldn't be doing. You know, they run a business all day long, and then when they get off work, they go to a service club or a nonprofit to raise money, to do stuff, to raise the quality of life. So it's just, it's, you know, there's countless examples of people like them, but just to mention a few, our chief, and it was great to honor him. Not many people have been as much as for the Lacy community and surrounding region as, as these two individuals. So it was a pleasure to watch and get a standing ovation, chief. Other than that, that is my report.
Thank you. So Councilmember Cox couldn't be here this evening. She will be back next week and hope her, she has recovering from a quick surgery, and everything's, she's doing well. So we've reached the end of our agenda. We're going to be adjourning to a work session to talk about the Lacy Veterans Services Hub and some updates there. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting. You keep it classy, Lacy, and we'll see you next time.